The meeting is open. Uh, Paul, could we have minutes?
In order.
Oh, excuse me.
Can you do public commentary?
Yeah, we're gonna do. This is the time at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. If any of you have come to say something about something that's not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. Would you like to do that? No, you've come for agenda items. Okay, now, minutes, Paul.
Ma'am Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of July 13th, 2021. Ezra.
Second.
Set in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Tonight, we have two public hearings and one discussion item. Our first public hearing, they're both continuances. The first public hearing is on an article for the November 2021 town meeting. It's a proposed mixed residential and commercial overlay district. And this conversation began at our meeting on the 13th. Our intention tonight is to look more carefully at the maps for this. Tom, do you want to? I see you've got the maps up.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to just touch base on two brief.
May I make some, what, comments on Scrivener's errors, I guess you'd call them, in here? Or is that not appropriate?
Can I just make two housekeeping kind of mentions before we get too started? That's okay.
Yeah, but could we hold on that? Yes.
One is that, one of our hearings tonight for McSweeney, the applicant has requested a continuance. So I'd like to let anyone know who's here for McSweeney. If they want to find out what's going on, they don't need to because they can go home and come back in two weeks when it'll be continued to. There's a couple of technical issues we're still sorting out. So I suggested the applicant, they take the night off. And so the board will basically move your continuance for two weeks. And those folks who are here for McSweeney can go out and enjoy a beautiful evening rather than hear about, and not that hearing about mixed-use zoning overlay district is not a bad way to spend your evening, but I just want to give those people that opportunity.
Okay, so if that's what you're here for, we will not be doing that tonight.
Right.
See, they're here for the overlay.
Second housekeeping point is that there has been, you know, one of the most interesting things we've had on our agenda for a while is rocks in the road. And there may be some people who are here to find out more about that. And if that was the case, we might consider the merits of taking that out of order so they could find out that we're not doing anything about rocks in the road tonight other than introducing what's going on and that the town is looking at formulating some strategies for dealing with that. So those folks whom, if they wanted, could stay and hear about mixed-use residential overlay district, which is a fabulous way to spend your evening, but could go home and look at their own rocks rather than ones that we might be talking about here. So if there are people here for that, and I don't know if there are, I'm seeing nods, it's the board's pleasure that you could consider taking something out of order.
I'll make the motion that we take the agenda out of order and have the planning board discussion about the Bywater Estates Rocks in the Roadway.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now let's have our discussion about the Bywater Estates Rocks in the Road. Is there anyone who would like to comment on that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
This is a private road.
Frank.
Why are we discussing this? Do we have any ability to get the town to do anything?
I'm just about to explain that if the chair gives me the floor for a couple of minutes, is to discuss why we're discussing this. When it, all of us, and my email back to the body in-house when we're discussing this is, the planning board's likely reaction is, why are we discussing this? So I anticipated your question. So if I can, I'll sort of elaborate on that. So Frank Duffy, Town Council, had received a complaint about someone having rocks in a private way. Having rocks in a private way. And is there something that we can do about that? Now typically, if there is a zoning violation, then someone can make a complaint to the building commissioner, and the building commissioner can look into what the zoning violation is, and there's a clear path for that. In the case of a violation of a subdivision regulation, there's not such a clear path. So when the planning board approved this subdivision back in the day, it was a through street. In the absence of a through street, there would have been two 500-foot-long cul-de-sacs, and 21 houses would have never been built in the subdivision because the road didn't go through. So at this point, that someone has obstructing, and for some time, the subdivision with rocks in the road, the question from Town Council and the town manager was, well, who initiates some action on this? So what I had suggested was that, well, if it's a violation of the subdivision approval, then it may be the planning board's role to say, we believe there's been a violation of the subdivision rules, what we approved, and perhaps the town should take action on it. Now, that was why we brought this here tonight. Since that time, I think we set a world record for when the agenda was posted to when I got the first phone call about it. And I've seen, and emails, and I've had several since. So tonight, we want to bring this to the board's attention. And we've invited some of the folks who are in the neighborhood. We've got letters from folks who are in the homeowners association, just to sort of introduce what's going on. And then, we're not taking any action on this tonight, but just so everybody's fully aware of what's going on. And then, at a future meeting, maybe in two weeks, maybe longer than that, we'll be back after we have some in-house discussion further to that extent. So that is why we're at Rocks in the Road tonight.
I still have the same question. Why, why is it our issue if it's a private road?
Well, if, if, I guess the issue is, can someone unilaterally change their subdivision by making it a dead-end road when we didn't approve a dead-end road? If it was a public way, it'd be crystal clear, the DPW would be out.
So they have blocked and approved, it should have said, rocks blocking the right-of-way, and I would have understood what you're talking about. I thought this was a rock coming up in the middle of the road, and we're, so you're blocking a right-of-way. That's a whole different, the information wasn't made clear to me, and now I understand why. I'm sorry.
So in the memorandum, in the memo, it says, rocks creating dead-end roads that weren't permitted violating subdivision regulations. So it's a little clearer in the memorandums you guys have gotten than what's on the agenda. So that is where we're at tonight. I've sort of introduced this.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
That's fine.
No, I'm, thank you.
I thought we were talking about bumpy road.
Like I said, it is, it is, you know, I've been at this for, I'm saying 25 years now. I round up and down, it may be 20, maybe 23 and 3/8.
I thought we were talking about a bumpy rocky road.
But I've never had anything like this before. And it's, you know, it's weird. And so we've got some folks, like I said, who've written in, who couldn't be here. There's some letters in that. There's some folks who are here to speak to it as well. But that's the general issue, is that, in the opinion of the building, the Town Council and the town planner, the DPW director, that this is, you know, clearly some sort of violation. And who has that right to say, we think there's some sort of violation, and some sort of action should be taken? So we're bringing to the planning board to introduce that you guys, and not you personally, that somebody in 1984 approved a subdivision that required a through street, and that through street's not being used as a through street anymore. And I think the principal hazard, in addition to emergency vehicles not being able to get through and having to go around, is that there's not really an expectation for a driver to be driving through a subdivision and come around a corner, or maybe drive from away, and have rocks in the road. Now, I encountered this subdivision last year when I was doing a site visit somewhere, and there were some contractors parked in the road. And I thought, well, I'll just wait, you know, till they move. But they didn't move because there wasn't any place to go to, because I couldn't go through. But I couldn't see that till I went around the other side and saw this. So that was my first question, like, you know, what exactly is up with that? So that's where we're at today, that there's been a complaint to Town Council, and Town Council isn't quite sure how to initiate some action on that. So that brings us to tonight.
Well, I have a question then. If so clearly a violation, why do we need to discuss it? Why don't, why, whoever put the rocks there, and it's clear who put the rocks there, why isn't that person instructed to remove the rocks?
Well, I believe that's where we're getting to. But this was, this was the request I had from the town manager and Town Council, in the event that it's necessary to initiate some enforcement action. Because you can tell somebody, you know, get your rocks off the road, and they can say, well, this is private property. Or you can say, you get your rocks out of the road because this is not an approved subdivision. This is not an approved condition of the subdivision. At the board, at a future meeting, was the vote that, no, this is not an approved condition of the subdivision. There's clearly a violation here. And now they can initiate some sort of enforcement action.
Yeah.
Do we know at what point in time the rocks were used to block the road?
They've been there a long time, apparently. A long time.
Well, one of the letters said they come and go. The rocks are moved, I don't know how often, but sometimes they're closer together, sometimes they're further apart, sometimes they're pushed off the road, but they're always there, ready to be used again.
And I will say, when I looked at them, I saw no moss on them.
Not in the picture. So.
So with that, if you want to just sort of let the folks who came here.
I think so, yes.
To tell us about their neighborhood. The chair, it's not a hearing, it's clearly up to the chair.
No, if they come here, let's, let's hear what they have to say about the rocks.
If you would.
Oh, in order to speak, you need to come to the lectern and give your name. Please, please.
Do I say my name in all?
Please.
Karen Hargraves, 31 South Hugh Way.
My husband, Peter Hargraves, talked to someone.
To the town planner.
He said that he could be here at 7:00.
Yes.
So he has, he's the person with all the information. We have two more neighbors here that you could ask his questions.
You should have stopped us from moving it forward. We would have been on time.
I was trying, I was trying to call.
That is true, I did have that conversation to be here. So anyhow, it's, you know, we can hear from the folks who are here, we can come back to this at 7:00, we can talk about the zoning bylaw.
Well, in effect, Mr. Hargraves has been heard by the town planner, because the town planner reported his conversation to me this morning. So I think that we know it.
Well, he had a previous.
We know that it's a violation.
So he had a previous engagement and asked what time this might come up. And Mrs. Hargraves reminded that, yes, we did say that. So Mr. Hargraves is working furiously to get here by 7:00.
He is.
Thank you.
Well, I am loath to get started on looking into the maps for the overlay district, to stop at 7:00 to deal with rocks in the road when we already know the outcome.
Okay.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Neither does having the rocks in the road all these years. I'm with you. So how about this? How about if we dispatch with the hearing for McSweeney and have a motion to continue that? And get that out of the way so we don't forget later on. And then, if we want to talk about rocks in the road and hear from, you folks have something to say in addition to Mr. Hargraves, whatever the case may be, I totally whiffed on telling Peter Hargraves that we likely wouldn't start till 7:00.
Could I just say that a scrambled agenda is not the best kind?
Nope.
Pat?
Then I would like to move that we keep this issue on the rocks in the road open. We've already moved it out of order. Just keep it open until Mr. Hargraves appears, rather than having to table it, reopen it, to be able to go on to something else. I don't even know if that's legal.
I think we're fine, because it's not, it's not a hearing, hearing, it's a discussion. So my apologies for creating more confusion other than just having.
I don't know what the big discussion should be about this. There's rocks in the road, they shouldn't be there. Let's come up with, if we're supposed to make a decision, let's come up with a decision.
Yeah, rock enforcement is not our usual work. I appreciate that you've taken the time.
It's a violation of subdivision control law.
To come here and tell us about it. You've sent us pictures, you've sent us letters. We appreciate it. We know what needs to be done. I think that we can go ahead and do it.
I want to point out, we're not the enforcement agency in this case either.
Correct.
So we're, I think this is the wrong venue.
Oh.
So we're going to move on.
Okay.
This is not the only road in town that has rocks blocking the way.
Perhaps not, but it's the only one on the agenda.
There's another one off Cypress Hill Street. And the intent is to block people from cutting through the neighborhood, but it has unintended consequences, particularly with emergency vehicles.
There's lots of them.
Entirely true. We are, I regret that you've been put to this trouble, and we are moving on. We're going to look now.
But I will withdraw my motion.
Would you please?
Yes, I just did.
Okay, good, thank you.
We didn't vote, that's what we did.
All right. Public hearing on McSweeney and Companies, A Continuation, A Definitive Plan Application To Create A Five-Lot Subdivision On Palmer Avenue. Map number 3503002000. And we are going to move to continue that. Could I have a motion?
So moved. To the 10th.
It is. To August 10th.
Yes, ma'am.
On a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Because we weren't ready for that. Okay, so that's done now.
They're not ready for it.
No, they're not. A public hearing on the article for November 2021 town meeting continued, proposed mixed residential and commercial overlay district. Tom?
Are there some changes that need to be made?
Um, there will be.
Which one's better, like that or like that?
The one before.
Yeah, that, yeah.
All right. Well, we'd like to report that the Subcommittee met last week, last week, and looked at some of the comments from the zoning bylaw, and made some amendments to that. We also have some additional correspondence regarding the zoning bylaw. And because it is a hearing, and the public has a right to be heard during the hearing, we should likely read those comments into the record when we get through the maps, just so they're on the record. They are comparable to some we've seen before regarding energy use and things like that. But to the maps, if we can, in your packets. And on the website, there is a group of maps. First map is that one of all the zoning districts in town. And then attached to that were 12 individual maps of the various areas that we're looking at. So going in order, this is essentially Nathan Ellis Highway and North Falmouth Highway. And what the maps show are the B2, B1, and B, our business redevelopment zones as they exist. So obviously, in these parts of towns, we're seeing B2 and not B1. And the idea was to make sure that we're certain about what parts of town we anticipated this zoning overlay district for and which we didn't. So here we are on North Falmouth Highway, and here you see the B2 zoning district at the corner of South County Road and Nathan Ellis. And then another at Winslow Road and North Falmouth Highway. And as we go through these, if there's an area that the, and I know the committee in an earlier meeting had sent correspondence to me about which areas they were considering, which ones they weren't, I'd just like to codify that tonight to say, these are the actual areas that we're looking at for this. So it's my recollection that North Falmouth Highway, the stretch was, was that one of those areas that the board, the group was considering as appropriate for the overlay district?
Could you clarify for the people who are watching on television that, I don't, the colors may not be clear? The dark red are the B2s and the?
B3s.
B3s.
So here where the cursor's at, where my little hand is at, B3, the dark red, is the B3 zoning district. That is not anticipated to be part of the overlay district. B2, which we see here, and that lighter red on the east side.
Yeah.
Of Nathan Ellis, are those areas be considered? The B3 across the intersection is not, because B1, B2, business redevelopment. East side of Nathan, east side of North Falmouth Highway, where these B2 parcels are, not the west side of Nathan Ellis, and not the west side of North Falmouth Highway where the B3 is.
Okay, and I think that those are, one is a pizza place on the north side, and south of it is, I believe, Bucatino's?
Yes, I believe it.
And south of that's a caterer.
And a caterer next to it, right.
Bucatree Catering.
And so the whole idea behind the overlay district is, it doesn't change the zoning, it allows additional options. So the things that are on there won't be prohibited in the future. The person who owns the property will have the option to use the existing zoning for B2, or to opt for the overlay district and look at that higher-density housing proposed for the site. So here, further down on North Falmouth Highway, we have the B3, which we're not anticipating. And we get down to the intersection of Winslow Road and North Falmouth Highway, and we have the B2 zoning district as well. And these are a bit more industrial-looking uses, as I recall. So once again, these parcels on North Falmouth Highway that are zoned B2 were the ones that we are anticipating, including in the overlay district. And by acclimation, I'm seeing that's what we were anticipating, correct?
That is right.
All right. So.
Could you say, could you estimate about how much land is there in the second B2 that you identified? I think that it's Silver Lounge and the Taylor Rental, things like that along there.
Yes, we do have a spreadsheet of all these parcels in it, and we could do that math for you, but I don't have it right here in front of me. But we will add that for. So the North Falmouth maps included into the zoning district. Now here, we're a little further out. This is map two on the website and in your package. And this is Nathan Ellis Highway at Sandwich Road. This is the location of a new Dunkin' Donuts, I recall, at this intersection, at the corner of Nathan Ellis and Sandwich Road. So was the board's intention to include this in the overlay district?
Yes.
No.
No, it is.
So map two, subject for some additional discussions. So can we just put a hold on that and come back through the rest of them?
Okay.
So we're going to come back to parcel map two. So map three, this is along Palmer Avenue, South of Terre Haune, where we are in Falmouth Academy's property, Highfield Hall Drive, and this B2 parcel here to the west of Palmer Ave., as well as this smaller B2 parcel here across from Minot Street. And this is where I think there's the liquor store there and the gas station. And then further down on Depot Street, we have a series of B2 parcels along here. So all of these B2 parcels along Depot Ave., along Highfield Drive, along Palmer Ave., oh, I missed one here, at the corner of Jones Road and Palmer Ave., where I've been known to get a bagel, but I won't say the names of places because we don't advertise. But there's a bagel place there on that corner. So these are ones that the committee was anticipating, including in the overlay district, as I understand. So as you scroll onto map four, here we are in the town center, in downtown. And here we have our first introduction of B1 zoning districts, parcels that are along Main Street. We also have B2 along Main Street, and we have business redevelopment. And it's my recollection that the working group, the Subcommittee, was considering all of those, all this area as part of the zoning overlay district. Yes. So here we have map five, continuing along Main Street. We have the business redevelopment districts here. And then we have B2 along Scranton Ave., along Robbins Road, and up here at Davis Straits, on both sides of Davis Straits, as we approach Dillingham Avenue, as well as these parcels on Worcester Court. Some of these areas, particularly the ones to the right of Davis Straits, are also part of the proposed Form-Based Code overlay district. In the event that, or not Form-Based Code overlay district, but the Form-Based zoning district. In the event that both articles were to pass, Form-Based Code and mixed-use residential, the underlying zoning for this Davis Straits area would change. It would not be eligible for the mixed-use redevelopment, a mixed-use, Mr. Cod, the mixed-use commercial overlay district, because the underlying zoning wouldn't be B2 anymore. The underlying zoning would be Form-Based Code. So essentially, you have a situation where if one passed, if the mixed-use zoning bylaw passed, but Form-Based Code didn't pass, or wasn't ready for a town meeting and one of them passed, you would be able to use the overlay district within the Davis Straits using the zoning, using the design regulations as currently proposed for that area. But when, and I say when optimistically, when Form-Based Code passes, the underlying zoning here would be, would go away, and it wouldn't be B2, it would be Form-Based Code. So this area was what the working group, the Subcommittee, was anticipating as one of the areas appropriate for the overlay district.
But the overlay district would still apply, it's just the underlying would be different.
Correct.
Right.
But the overlay is overlaid on B2. So when B2 goes away, because it's Form-Based Code, that's no longer the overlay district. It comes out of the overlay district because the Form-Based Code is now the zoning there.
But it would probably have the same 20 units per acre design, site review, and all the same components. So it's almost semantics. There's a little bit more control in Form-Based Code.
We know that, but I just want it in the record right now. This is going to be a killer.
All righty, so, let's see how I do rotating things again.
Well, that's our intention.
So this is map six in your packet and on the website. And this, once again, encompasses parts of Davis Straits to the south of Jones Road and Worcester Court. Portions of the east side of Worcester Court are also proposed for the Form-Based Code bylaw. But the, the part here, we have, that sort of is off of Jones Road with Cathy Anne Lane. It actually fronts on Jones Road. There's the shopping center, I think, in the front. And the area where the mall is, and those other parcels as we head out of Davis Straits and on the T-Ticket Highway, all these parcels were being considered as for the mixed-use residential overlay district.
Go ahead.
I have a question. I wasn't aware that the public use was so wide along that structure. So that means that that could not be part of the overlay district?
As currently proposed. Now, one of the things we had talked about in the Subcommittee group was where a parcel is split between two zoning districts, where you have B2 and you have another zoning district in there, whether it be, you know, light industrial, or in this case PU. Would we consider the merits of extending the overlay district into public use as well? And the consensus at our meeting that we had last week was, let's not try to make it too confusing for people by saying, B2 plus PU, you know, minus two. The consensus at that point was, let's stick with those parcels that are zoned for B2. So in this case, because these parcels in pink don't front on T-Ticket Highway, they wouldn't be eligible for the zoning overlay district because they don't have that frontage along the way. And on Jones Road, the property fronts maybe just a hair there. So typically, you've got to have a certain amount of frontage, because this is B3 here. So that's one of those cases where we talked about, you know, we've got these split-use parcels, split-zone parcels. And the discussion at the meeting the other day was, well, let's just keep it the overlay district as previously designed as in B2. The other discussions we've had internally is to make it clear for folks, is that when we get down to that final zoning, we would have a list of those parcels that are, will be in the overlay district. And that does two things. It makes it very easy for our GIS guy, Bob Shea, to create the zoning overlay district because he's got a list of parcels that the overlay is going to go on. So at the end of the day, we would have that list of parcels that says parcel 1647, 1585, all those would be part of the overlay district. So the mall, this back parcel.
I just want to.
Yes, please.
That section you're talking about there that's public use, that's nothing but pavement and parking lot, right? There's no commercial properties there at all. That's, that's the Stop and Chalk parking lot.
Yes, so the maps that I did, I wanted to make sure they were zoomed to the part that you could see the footprint of the building. So that brown is the footprint of the building.
So that whole section of B2 is now going to be excluded from the overlay district unless we were to rezone that public use piece? Is that basically what's going on?
Or say that any split parcel, that is B2 and something else, would be included in the district.
Without specifying what the other zone is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see that.
So, when we look at making a map, that map covers, you know, that area.
John?
I just want to mention that when we looked at the parcels, there are a lot of split-use parcels.
Downtown.
And it's not just public use, it's residential. So, we wanted, we really felt strongly that it just should stay with the B2, whatever that, whatever that. If it's split use, we don't want to extend it.
Could a property, say that property owner come before us or the zoning board and, or a town meeting, and get that rezoned? I mean, is that something that-
Absolutely.
If somebody's looking at this as a potential-
Which is okay.
They would have to do that, so there's a way around it.
They're protected by the zoning, and that's, they should be.
There's a way to do it, but we did not-
They'd have to want to.
That didn't come to our attention at this meeting that Tom is talking about, so we didn't think about that. We were thinking more about the split pieces-
I thought I knew all the zoning.
Here and in North Falmouth.
Well, and we're going to learn a whole lot more about the zoning because one of the projects that Jed has, and he promised not to quit when I said, would you do this? He is going to be doing an analysis of every, all the parcels in town to determine what of those parcels have split zoning. And that's a product of the, of the online permitting that we're moving towards. The town has spent money, and we're looking at creating a digital building permit system where things will be digital, and everybody will have access to that information. And part of that is a, one column right now that says, the zoning on this parcel is blank. And we all looked at that and went, where are the other columns? Because we need at least one more column. Some parcels have got, you know, three zonings on them. And that's sort of a product of things probably like this PU parcel, where someone, when they created the zoning, said, 200 feet from this road will be this kind of zoning district. It was done with the historic districts as well. X number of feet off the, off the street is this area of concern, whether it's historic district or whether it's some type of zoning. And we have those sort of things. It creates those sort of issues. Because back when we first did zoning, there wasn't any GIS. There wasn't a parcel-based system for that. People just use crayons, as we still do, I have crayons, and mark up maps that way. But this is one of those instances where the initial discussion was, let's stick with keeping the overlay district to B1, B2, and business redevelopment. And let's not get too fine-grained in the minutia of these-
Why isn't it an avenue for a property owner to, to change it if they so wish, so?
So, heading down south of Spring Bar's Road, here we are back in the Davis Straits area here. And as we discussed before, this is actually also part of the Davis Straits overlay district, these properties on Worcester Court. So, those properties would all be included in the overlay district. And these ones at the bottom, also part of the Form-Based Code. So, this is the area that the subcommittee was considering as appropriate for the zoning overlay district, as I understand it.
Yes.
Charlie, can I ask you a question?
Oh.
How does, how does this impact the historic districts?
Um-
Historic districts generally go in just 100 feet or so, and they don't take into account the property at all.
Yeah, so, right now, if you wish to make changes in a historic district, they go to the Historic Commission. So, if someone wants to just come in and say, I'd like to take this house that's in the historic district and tear it down, that'll be up to the Historic Commission to decide, to what extent could they modify it. The Historic District, Historic Commission's charge is to review those properties that you can see from the street. What is the exterior look like? How does that building present itself from the street? Some may come to Historic Commission and put an addition on the back. They can remodel the inside of it. But what you see from the street is typically the realm of the Historic Commission. And they would have a say in what that building looked like if someone was going to try to use the zoning overlay district on a parcel that was B1, B2, BRD in a historic district.
Pam?
This would not interfere with that at all.
They're two separate channels to, for someone to pull that off, historic and planning.
Thank you.
So, in areas now in the historic district, if half the house was in one zone and the other half was in the other zone, it's the historic district that makes the decision as to which zone the majority of the house is going to go to?
No, it's where is the house located? Is the house was in the district or not? Because there are parcels, once again, as I said, some of the historic districts said, from this street, and I'm making up the number, 200 feet back is going to be the historic district. So, there are parcels in the historic district where the house is set back 201 feet. So, the property is in the historic district, but the house itself is not. And they, as I understand it, and we're still getting up to speed because we don't have Corey with us anymore who understood all this stuff, and Jed has been meeting with me and is meeting with the Historic Commission Chairman to get up to speed on this. But essentially, if a house, if a property is in the historic district and 200 foot of the yard is grass, and the house starts at 201 feet, it's outside the historic district, it's likely not subject to the Historic Commission's review.
Or Main Road and North Falmouth.
Jim?
If my recollection is correct, we don't have an historic district on this map at all. We're talking about something that happens probably in the next map. Is there any historic property district on the map we're looking at?
We'll sort that out and let you know.
I'm pretty sure we're not, we're in the wrong map right now.
I don't think, I don't think on this particular map we are, but in some of these-
That's what we're looking at. And I wondered why we're having this conversation, looking at this map, which I believe is not in the historic district.
Because someone asked a question, and I do my best to explain it.
Right, the place where it could have come up-
Next. Is there another map?
Where we're doing B1.
B1, that's right, is where it should have been. That's the appropriate. I believe this conversation doesn't link up with what we're looking at.
But isn't it also true in the historic district that the Historic Commission concerns itself entirely with the aesthetics and the appearances, and not with the uses inside? And along the B1 district, Jim-
The B1 is right.
Yeah, and B1 buildings, some of them considered historic, are large enough for residential apartments up above under the new-
Can we go back to the B1 district so we could be talking about the right map?
And the business district, I think, Paul, they did the same thing. They went back 100 feet, no matter what the lot size was. So, there are a lot of split, see them? There are a lot of split districts there.
And we got to go back one more.
And in the map just before this, oh.
There we go.
There.
So, here we have the interaction of B2 and business redevelopment and historic district.
Right.
All converging at the same spot. So, let's say that someone had a house here, and they wanted to create apartments for it. If that renovation is entirely in the interior or to the rear, likely they could. If they wanted to take and change the roof line of a house and put a second story on it-
Where are you talking about?
I'm talking about this, this stretch where we've got-
I believe that's not in historic district.
As a general rule.
I'm trying to understand.
Because I don't have a map that identifies where the historic districts are. So, if a property is in the historic district, and it's in B2, it's going to be reviewed by two boards.
Right, but I believe the historic district, I believe the historic district ends at Shore Street, and the Marx Building is a specifically site itself, but not in a district. It's a special property. I'm just getting confused at what we're talking about here. Because we're talking about historic district and pointing to things that are zoned, that are not historic district.
So, any parcel that is B1 or B2 would be subject to the overlay district. And any B1 or B2 or business redevelopment parcel that was also in a historic district, whether it's on the map or not, if we create the overlay district and it's in a historic district, it will be subject to review of the Historic Commission, whether you see it on this map or not.
I just happen to know where it is. And we're pointing to things that aren't in it, and I find that confusing. I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to make it clear that it doesn't matter if you see it on the map, if that condition exists. And we're going to get to one when we get down-
Good.
But historic districts are not outlined on this map. If you get too many lines on a map, it gets really hard to look at them.
Okay.
So, we continue on our tour of Falmouth. One 11 by 17 map at a time. Just did that one. All righty, so this is map eight. Are you keeping score at home? And as I said, these maps are on the website, they are in the board's packets. So, this is in, along East Falmouth Highway, and there is two ends to this. Here at the intersection of John Parker Road, we have B2 there. And then down on the other side at T-Ticket, just before we get to, I don't think, is that actually Santos Way, or is that a different? I think Santos Way is below that. But anyhow, this parcel here, which I think is the Obashans, maybe? Let's call it a hardware store, small-sized chain, so we don't use proper nouns. So, that is that B2 parcel on T-Ticket, as well as the B2 parcel at East Falmouth Highway and John Parker Road. We're going to see the rest of that on the next map. And this is the area that the board, I believe, was considering as appropriate for the mixed-use overlay district.
Yes.
That's what I understood.
Right.
All right, so here, map nine, we pick up, this is John Parker Road, right over here at the very edge of the map. So, this is that B2 district along East Falmouth Highway. So, it comes from here, back Askapasket, after Court Realty Avenue, continues along until we get to, closer to Old Meeting House. So, again, the other side of Mill Pond, and we've got these B2 parcels along East Falmouth Highway to Old Meeting House Road and at that intersection there. And those, as I understand, were parcels that the subcommittee was considering as appropriate for the mixed-use overlay district.
Yes.
So, here we are at map 10, continuing on our tour. Here's Old Meeting House, we had that little bit of overlap, that's that intersection. And then we get out here to Central Ave. on East Falmouth Highway. Actually, that's B3, but on the south side of this is B2 at Central Avenue here. This is, I think, the bank that was recently added a second driveway to.
At the UPS.
That's the UPS store.
Okay. And this B2 parcel.
That's Kenyon Market.
So, yeah, because this is Timothy Bourne Cartway over here. Yeah, so that's, that's-
Kenyon's Market.
Kenyon's Market. Since we gave UPS a shout-out, we'll give Kendall a shout-out as well. So, that is that parcel, and this is appropriate, this is a district that the subcommittee was considering as appropriate for the mixed-use residential overlay district, as I understand it.
Yes.
See, so here we are at map 11. Map 11, and this is Wacoit. So, here we are at Wacoit Highway at Carrot Shop Road, where this is all B2 parcels here. And this, as I understand, was an area that the subcommittee was considering appropriate for the overlay district as well.
Yes, and part of that might be in historic district.
And if it were?
It would have to see both boards.
Thank you. So, here we are in parcel two, where we get into Woods Hole. And I believe this is a district that the committee was not considering as part of the overlay district. The business redevelopment parcel here, which is recently the subject of a redevelopment where the dome is at, and these B1 parcels in the Village of Woods Hole. And it's my understanding that this is not an area that the subcommittee was considering as appropriate.
Correct.
So, map number 12, we'll take that off the map and say, we're not bringing the zoning district to here. And I hope so close. There's one other parcel that I think didn't make the cut on these maps, and that is-
On 151.
This, 151, I'm going to bring those up on the GIS, just so we'll have them in front of us, as well as the site of the former Oysters Two. Because they're not here anymore, I can't advertise for them. But I had a lovely dinner when I went there. Give the computer a chance to refresh. There we are. So, this is next to that lovely farm and garden store that sells lots of plants, has a great time.
Honies.
Hmm?
Honies.
He's trying not to say the name.
Yeah. People are trying to understand it.
Because I am a member there, I have a rewards card there. I don't want to look like I'm giving some preferential treatment. So, so this is the site that was Wood, was Oysters Two, and there's now a brewery there. And this is the site, as I understand, because it's just those two parcels and sort of out in the midst of where it's at, that was not being considered by the subcommittee as an appropriate site for the mixed-use development.
That's correct.
That's what I understood. So, last on our list of things that we were not considering is this, these B2 parcels on Nathan Ellis Highway at the end of Ranch Road. And these were not being considered for the mixed-use overlay district for a variety of uses, including that they don't really comply with the regional policy plan, as well as other things, that we are not considering those. So, with that understanding, we'll adjust the maps that we've got and take Woods Hole off, take the brewery property off, and this one at Nathan Ellis Highway off.
John?
And maybe we should discuss the other Sandwich Road, 151.
Yes, map number two. Let's go back to that.
Madam Chair, through you. I believe we missed map number seven. Not to keep Tom up there longer, but I don't recall going through map number seven.
Let's go take a look at it. So, there's map seven.
Ah, the further reach of-
Great, thank you, Jed.
You're welcome.
So, this is T-Ticket Highway, as we are approaching the intersection of T-Ticket Highway and Sandwich Road, where we have lots of folks, lots of businesses, all along T-Ticket Highway. So, as I understand, this stretch of T-Ticket Highway from essentially Sandwich Road down to the south here was all considered appropriate for the mixed-use overlay district.
Correct. And that, I believe that section's now all in the sewer as well.
Yes, it is.
That's one of the reasons why we're considering it. Maybe not all of it, but most of it.
All right, thank you, Jed. So, back to the top to map number two. There, so map number two, and this is at the corner of Nathan Ellis and Sandwich Road. And as I said, I think this is the site of a new center, that there's a very famous coffee place that people live on.
We looked at this.
Yeah. So, I think the jury was out whether this was an area that we, the subcommittee was considering as appropriate for the district or not.
One of the concerns that some, some members had was that there isn't any public transportation there. So, that was one of the issues. But I think as the board, we should make this decision.
Right, so that, that one's-
Because we do have a difference of opinion.
That one's more questionable, so we ought to, we ought to look at that. But Tom, before we do, I wonder if you could put up, I know you've got this map also that we're all used to, because I think it, by putting them all together on one map, it makes our reasoning more clear. And you can see the reach of it.
So, I'm going to go through, if you don't mind, from parcels as we go along here. So, yes, yes, no. Let's talk about that one. So, we're at this parcel right here that we're talking about. So, we've essentially continued down linear along North Falmouth Highway on that west side of town. And we're here that we just said no to Nathan Ellis Highway, and this is the parcel we're talking about right now, at Sandwich and Nathan Ellis, as to whether it would be included in the overlay district.
Could we, could we first say, just so that people can follow the logic of it and see if they agree with it, that what we are trying to do is take those parcels that are already zoned for business, they already have businesses in them, so it's not a change, to add a higher density along with commercial and residential things to them. So, and they're spotted around town in each of them. And then we started excluding things, either because- And then we started excluding things, either because they were on the aquifer, up on 151, or they lacked transportation, or down in Woods Hole, they've got a lot of water resiliency issues down there in historic districts, so not, there's not really a lot of open land down there to develop. And we arrived at the ones that we've chosen. And I think the only question mark we've really got for the board is the one at the corner of Sandwich Road and 151. Because I think, is it true that we have, the rest of us, agreed on the others?
Yes, we did.
Yeah. So what do we think of that? Pat?
I would say no, because there's no public transportation out there, it's above the aquifer, we don't want the density there. It's not what we were looking at in the local comprehensive plan for, let's put it in quotes, affordable housing, as far as location goes. Nowhere near schools, amenities, that sort of thing. So I would say definitely no.
No. Paul, what do you say?
I agree, I don't think it should be included out there. It's too far out of the realm of the services that we require.
Sam, I'll just keep going down the row.
I wish we could utilize some of that land.
So you would be in favor of it?
No, I wouldn't, but I said, I wish we could. I mean, it's a lot of open space there, and, but I don't believe it's appropriate, as much as I would believe it.
Wish, right, okay. John?
Part of the reasoning that we had for these smaller parcels was that we have some plazas where the buildings are tired, they're old, and we're hoping someone will use this bylaw to either spruce up their property with a renovation, or maybe someone else will purchase it for an investment, tear down what's there, and build something new with apartments upstairs, and that we get a chance to do the site plan review, design review. And at that intersection, those buildings are brand-new. The gas station is almost brand-new, and then the other building where the coffee shop is, and I think it's a veterinarian, that's a brand-new building. So you're looking many, many years before, that kind of renovation would take place there. And we talked about, if ever got to that point, they can always come in and ask to be included. But, and plus, there isn't any public transportation there.
And therefore, you would vote?
I would vote no.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm thumbing out on that, too. Anything to prevent adding more traffic to 151, because, you know, from what I hear is happening with Mashpee Commons, 151 is going to be a scary stretch of road, and if we can avoid adding to it. And also, while I talk about the comprehensive, the local comprehensive plan, we want to keep our development close to the villages, and the main roads, and the sewer as much as possible, and that just doesn't fit any of that.
I'm in total agreement. I think putting it out there would create more of a new village center, which is exactly what we don't want to do with the local comprehensive plan. So I think it goes against our strategic planning.
Right. So we're all, I agree. So we're all in agreement, that would not be included.
All right, so we will take map two off the block as well.
Nothing on 151, except at the corner of 151 and 28A.
So that one goes away.
Right. And it sounded as if we were in agreement also, but let me check and see, that on the split lots, which is going to cause a problem at some point, but we're going to, we're saying we're not going to solve that problem now.
No.
They'll do it one by one.
There's way, way too many of them.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think then we know what we will propose to town meeting.
All right, so we're good on the maps. So Jed has loaded the changes that were discussed at the last subcommittee meeting. And do we want to introduce what those changes are that we've made at the last subcommittee meeting?
Yes. Yeah, it's the memo there, but I'd also like to speak, there are the things, the changes we've made and the changes that we didn't make. I would like to respond to that. A lot of people, people I really respect, had given time to thinking about how to add to and improve the proposal for the mixed-use, and we did not adopt all of their, all of their thinking, and I think that we should explain ourselves when we get to that. So, I mean, I'm fishing among my papers, because they're here, we have the letters, Some changes, and Pat, you were beginning to look at these, some of them were formatting changes that have been made?
Yeah. It's not much, the things that I have are more Scrivener's errors.
Oh, well, is it the time to do that now?
I don't know. One of the things that caused me trouble was three-quarters, then you had three-quarters story. That should be in perens, because it looks like a three-quarter, three-quarter story.
Oh.
So one is just spelled out, the other is numerical, and it...
And that got added because someone thought it made it clearer.
And to me, it goes, huh? What's a three-quarter, three-quarter story?
Yeah.
So I would put the numerical three-quarter into perens. That's a really easy change.
Jed, you're hearing that?
And again, Scrivener's, when we have affordable dwelling units in under 260, there, twice in there where these units was not capitalized, under C and D, and we refer to them as ABUs. So that should be capitalized, both of those instances. Then under 261G, next to the...
So if you could go back for just a second, Pat, where was that at?
C.
C and D.
In 240, 260.
Mm-hmm. And if you look at 261, you go to G, and it's the next to the last line in there, it says, "Then a 20-inch setback." It should be 20-foot setback.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Sorry.
No, there's...
But that's it. These are all, as I said, they're Scrivener's kinds of things.
One of the comments that we heard was a request that any of these should be under special permit, because the public, under special permit, the public gets to voice, does the public, I'm not sure how this goes, if somebody wants to take their parcel, work with this bylaw, what's the process? Do they, whereby they get the public input, abutters and have a say? Because the comment was, if an abutter isn't notified, and someone goes in, puts 20 units on an acre next to their property, and they had no say in it, how, what's the...
How can they have a say? Jim?
Well, this is important, and this is really, really critical. They, all the butters get notified on anything that happens. But what we're trying to do, and this is, at least what I, is not being a special permit, because if it's by right, it cannot be appealed in court. Okay, you can appeal it, you can talk to the zoning, you can, they can come to hearings. But if it's by right, they can't take you to court for it. Where it's a special permit, they can take you to court, and that can take two or three years. And we're trying to find a way to get this development out of that issue, and it's a hard one.
Yeah.
There's, we've heard arguments on both sides, but that's, it's kind of important, we've always used the term "by right," and that's the reason we don't say "special permit." Special permit can be appealed. By right cannot. Maybe we should ask a lawyer to say that, I'm not a lawyer, but I believe that's my experience.
If I, if I may. So the process for approving something under this bylaw would be through site plan approval, much like we do for other things. And there's a site plan approval notification. It's typically 100 feet. That's not a very big space to notify folks for special permits. There's a larger, there's a larger area for notification. So you can consider the merits of making that notice to a butters in a little broader area.
Yeah, that was...
300 feet?
Well, I'm just saying, perhaps so.
What's it for a special permit?
300 feet.
Okay.
So in the, you cannot appeal a site plan, but you can appeal the building permit that comes out of a site plan. So if the planning board was to approve a site plan for one of these developments, they don't appeal the planning board's decision, they appeal the building commissioner's issuance of a building permit. And the thing that makes that a bit more lumpy for those folks is there's not a meeting where the building commissioner issues a building permit. They'd have to request notification from the building commissioner, "Can you notify me if a permit's issued on this?" And they would have to appeal that building permit issue within the timeframe for that.
But that particular case is state law, right? We can't change that.
I don't...
Appealing a building permit is really a state law issue, so it's not a zoning issue. So we can talk about it, but we don't have any influence over it. It's a fact of life.
I would support the 300 notification. We're going to have full hearings and take testimony and...
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a very good idea. It's a big enough change that people should take an interest and should have an opportunity to get involved.
Yeah, we're not trying to pull anything off on anybody.
It's a great idea.
And, you know, we still want to keep it the by right thing, avoid the special permit. Because, you know, once again, we're trying to streamline things here as well.
We need, we need housing in this town.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is where we want it to go.
Yeah.
And by right is a really important, as Jim said, a very important feature of this for the streamlining, but it's, all the way down the line, it just, it's a big incentive to the developers, too. And it's hard to get developers to put this kind of money into something.
For example, just for discussion, there's several properties in town that are approved four years ago that were special permits, and because of COVID, they were appealed, and then the court didn't meet for a year and a half. So their right to appeal ended up being a two-year, two-plus-year extension on it. And that's...
Well, they weren't appealed because of COVID.
No, but it's just delayed. But what happens, it just works into the fact of you appeal something and the court's not meeting, it goes on and on and on. And the example I'll give is like 15 years ago, or 12, whatever, we did the dome, the old dome, we got, went through the whole thing, got it done, there was appeals made, and the market, six months later crashed, the investors all left, and it never happened, and that building sat there, and it's been rotten for 15 years.
Right.
And that's what, that's what we're trying to avoid. An extra 300, 250 or 200 feet of notice is fine. I like that as a solution, a lot.
We'll add that. What section does that get added?
We can add it to all of them. The whole, you know, as part of it, the notice period is 300 feet.
Yep. We'll, we'll put that in in the procedure.
Right.
Good idea.
I don't see exactly where it would go, but it would, because we don't have a procedure section there.
So do we want to have Jed sort of outline the changes that was made from our last meeting to this one? This is the...
Yeah, that would be easy, except it's really tiny, I don't know if you're going to be able to see it.
Jed has skills, he can make the print bigger.
Magic.
Magic skills.
Okay, so in the beginning, the purpose section and in the definitions section, hopefully the folks can see that. I was just cleaning up the bullets. So we had a couple of items here in definitions, as well as up here in the purpose area, where the line simply just created an extra bullet. So that was all cleaned up. Minor housekeeping formatting issues. At the last public hearing, there was discussion about the eligible household definition.
Mm-hmm.
And so I spent some time researching some other affordable housing bylaws, and so we came up with this additional language, which is essentially very close to what you had, you had "is less than." I just added "is less than or equal to eighty percent of the area median income." Minor change. And then in section 240, 258, the establishment or delineation, there was comments at the last meeting regarding how would the underlying zoning be used. So this additional language, as you can see here, underlined in red, simply clarifies the fact that this is an overlay district, and the underlying zoning will stay in place if an applicant chooses to use it. And in section 240, 259, again, that idea of uses allowed by right, the idea of reinforcing the underlying zoning, or actually enforcing what this overlay district would allow, is basically taking out the original A and B, which identified the uses of the underlying zoning. We just simply took that out, make it nice and clean, that this overlay district only allows mixed-use development, as well as that residential multifamily at the density indicated up on the screen. That's the first change, and then taking essentially item B and moving it up to right underneath the uses allowed by right, which basically says that an applicant would need to acquire all necessary permits, go through the process, et cetera. And then the last section here is 240, 260. Again, just cleaning up some of the language used, capitalizing some of the words, minor issues here. That's it. Minor things down at 240, 261. Again, just adding some additional language. But the last section, 262, for decisions, there was some discussion about what the actual definition of adverse impacts would be. So we researched the existing bylaw, found the maximum height in the dimensional regulations, and essentially used that language within this last item in number three. So it will read, "The proposed development avoids adverse impacts on the neighborhood."
But don't we usually use, "Does not cause a substantial adverse effect"? Isn't that...
Well, that's under the special permit. That's 240, 216, the requirements for a special permit.
Yeah.
And we're trying to avoid some of the, we're not trying to, normally we grab all of 240, 216 and throw it in as all thing, and I think we're trying to not do some of that.
Now we want not to.
Well, maybe not. But anyways, I'm just saying, you're saying, "Don't we usually?" I'm saying, that's, that gets thrown in, every time, all special permits are tied into, if I remember correctly, 240, 16.
So this is not connected to any special permit language.
Correct.
Right, the subcommittee...
The time point that will be missed by many.
Subcommittee thought it may be language included in site plan review, but after review, it was actually not in there, so we just used some of the language from the maximum building height. And that's it.
Do, is there any disagreement with those changes?
Oh, they're excellent.
Okay.
And in addition, well, I think the 300-foot setback's a really good idea.
Well, and to pick up on the capitalization that Pat had and so forth.
There are a few others that I just found.
Oh, you want to say them now? Let's just get them out there.
Okay. Under 259, the second line down, site plan review, review should be capitalized. I mean, it's a stupid little thing, but, and then we just, where's that one? I just saw, I'm going to find it on this, because I just underlined it or something or something. Okay, under 259, it's what it's currently then now be. Why is the word "with" underlined? Is there a reason? Dwelling units with density. Was, is there meant to be an emphasis by underlining the word "with"?
I couldn't tell you, that's the version that came to me. I did not underline that.
That would be an accident.
Okay, so the underlining goes away.
Get rid of the "by."
That's it. Those are the only other ones I noticed while we were going through it.
Okay, I think we ought to take a look at some of the letters.
Yes, if, and we've got some folks in the audience who may want to come in as well. So if I can, just ask, we've got three letters from David Mark Welsh, Robert Gould, and Susan Richmond. Are any of those people here tonight?
Would you like me to summarize?
I've sort of highlighted them if...
Yeah, Bob can go ahead with that. Bob?
This is from Robert Gould. This email is to communicate written comments. I am in favor of the draft town meeting article on the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. I suggest that a provision be made to require that new construction be made net zero or net zero-ready. So that's pretty much the gist of that one. From Susan... From Susan Richmond, I am very much in support of a mixed overlay district, and I appreciate the time and effort the planning board is voting to this. I would like to add that I strongly believe that the new construction should take into account the need to reduce carbon emissions and advance climate-friendly energy solutions. So again, more about the buildings themselves, that they should be also be providing automobile charging stations for parking spaces. And from Ed Brody, Sue Connors, Diane Hubin, and Ed Foley, we are the opposites of the, oh, wrong letter.
Wrong letter.
Yeah.
Bob Gould?
Maybe the hour in favor.
Yeah.
But not for this.
So if I could touch base on a couple of those issues.
I think there's one more letter, isn't there?
I don't have, I just have two.
Did you do this? I haven't seen.
Okay, and Mark Welsh.
Yeah.
I am broadly in favor of the goals of the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. However, I am concerned that the discussion of one of the most substantial plans for a long-term change to our downtown does not reflect the FALMSH has declared climate emergency and is committed to achieve net zero emissions or reflect recent actions at the state level that call for drastic emission reductions in the next nine years. So another one about the climate.
Well, climate and energy. And I think that we should talk about our thinking on that. The town adopted the stretch energy code, is it three years ago now or two?
Two.
Two? Two. So I'm not sure whether he was aware of that when he was doing his thinking on that. So we're close to it, but we're not expanding on it now. Because our strongest motivation here is to incentivize developers to actually do this. And don't want to add to the expense. Jim?
We've never really calculated it, but I think what should be considered here, that by putting all these people on this area where we have public transportation and not driving cars, maybe a calculation of how much the carbon footprint would be, is being removed by the zoning change, so that people understand that this is a substantial move in and of itself in reducing carbon emissions and car use and traffic. And we should get credit for that when they're all talking about all these other things. I'm all in favor of solar powered doing things, but I don't want to burden these things with too many regulations. They should be recommendations.
The building code takes a careful.
Building code, yeah. And they should be strong recommendations.
Well, we have as part of our site plan review process to inquire what they have done towards solar. So that comes up as part of site plan review.
That should be part of it.
And it's already part of it. It's not a requirement.
I just hope it doesn't become another regulation.
No.
Well, we're not proposing it now. John?
I was gonna say the same thing. We can't make this part of the bylaw.
Yeah, right.
When the applicant comes in front of us, then we can make those reviews.
Yeah.
Right.
And besides, if we use this language in the bylaw, things are evolving so quickly with technology that these, this language may be out of date in three years.
It belongs in site plan review recommendations. That's where the language.
We're certainly in favor of these items.
Yeah.
Tom?
Well, after the board turns it out.
Oh, okay. Did you want to pitch in on this energy thing?
Yeah, I just, anything that we can do to decrease the footprint, I think, is terrific. I'm just concerned if we just glaze over it, then we're never gonna really have what we want. And I just, I think we should strongly recommend, but not make it part of, because I think it gets too convoluted and it gets tied up with legalese and, and I hate legalese almost as much as I dislike psychobabble. But I do want to make sure that we acknowledge it and we say this is part of what we do want, but we don't want it to become a legal issue.
Right. We don't want it to be a requirement of putting in what is actually, we're calling it mixed-use, commercial and residential, but this is our multifamily bylaw, and it's, we have wanted one for a long time, and we can't freight it up too much.
The stretch code is gonna apply to all of the building, you're shaking your head.
Already. Right. Jim?
I'm in favor of Pam's language saying strongly recommend. I think that that gets the point across.
You mean to add it to this?
If we're, if we're, but no, in sight, not in the zoning bylaw, but when we, which we need to talk about is the site plan review. I think the strong recommendations need to be there. It should be part of the site plan review, which we really haven't finalized yet for this, we've talked about it, but we could add more to it and refine it.
Well, site plan review refers to more than just this.
Right.
Right, so it's bigger than this.
Correct. Well, actually, the solar application should be part of every site plan review, whether it's in this district or not.
It's also part of the local comprehensive.
And it should be part of, yeah, it is.
It is.
I just don't want everyone to think, oh, we're just gonna lay this on the, you know, this regulation, this new bylaw. It should be part of site plan review, period.
Not going to be one of the sticking points.
Right.
Okay, so we settled on that. Tom?
Yes, so I wanted to say that, you know, we regularly review, I regularly view in our professional circles, things like climate zoning, which is sort of what it's called these days. So the city of Boston, the Cape Cod Commission of the Boston area, the Massachusetts, the MAPC, their regional district, as well as the city of Somerville, are all looking at sort of climate type of zoning. And how can we go about incentivizing those sort of things and creating those sort of things? So it's being discussed, but the issue is to what extent can zoning be the tool to fix that? Brookline, a couple of years ago, in their zoning, required that all new buildings would be electrified. There would be no natural gas. There wouldn't be a natural gas hookup in their zoning. The attorney general struck that down as being outside of the scope of zoning. Because zoning is that thing that we use, and I wrote it down so I wouldn't misquote it. Zoning typically deals with the land use, the buildings, the dimensional requirements, the regulations of how the building sits on the building, what size, what uses are those. And if we get too far out of those parameters for zoning, then the attorney general takes issue with those sort of things. So I think we can look at incorporating some of those things into the review as a project comes in about, well, where would the parking space be? And will that have an electric charging station there? And move towards that. The stretch code is certainly going to help. But there are folks who are looking at this who've got more resources than we do, even though Jed is fabulous. He's been doing wonderful work. But, you know, we're monitoring what's going on in other places, but also learning from other folks' errors, like Brookline. And I have friends who work in Brookline who proposed that zoning and was shot down. So I think that we have to stay within the realm of what zoning allows us to do and employ those other things as we can through design and things like that. And most of those are building code issues. The governor's climate legislation has some additional potential for some of those things as well. So I just don't want to give anybody the impression that, you know, we in-house aren't aware of that and aren't looking at what our options are for that. We are, but I just want to make sure that we stay sort of within the parameters that we're allowed to operate under.
That we're allowed to. Okay, I would like to, thank you. I would like to bring up to the board one other thing that was recommended in the public testimony at our last meeting. I think it was Michael Plasse who brought up the idea of, I think of them as studio apartments. He was calling them SROs.
Single-room occupancy.
Single-room occupancy, but they have a kitchenette, bathroom, they're studio apartments. And I don't think we wrote anything in that excludes them.
No, we did not.
So we don't need to include them.
It'd be fine. No, they're part of the.
They're part of it.
Absolutely.
Good, because they're really useful. Okay, and then one other thing. We, a comment I've heard in a couple of places is by doing this, we're increasing the traffic downtown. That may be true. But it would also be true if we put the mixed-use residential and commercial in outer parts of town, would be more than adding to the traffic. It would be worse than leaving it here where you can really walk to everything.
There's an opportunity to be, actually, the smart growth planning that we've really adopted as a strategy like 10 years ago covers this particular issue. If you take the policy, oh, we don't want it downtown, what you're really talking about is you want sprawl. You want it out there, out there, out there. And we made that decision a long time ago that we're not going down that road. It becomes, it's brought up all the time, but the idea of tying it to public transportation and walkability of the neighborhoods should reduce the chances. If you have them, let's say we did this out in Hatchville, they'd get in their car and they'd drive downtown to go to work. There'd be no chance that they could walk to work. There's no chance that they get public transportation, and we'd be pumping more carbon, you know, their cars going back and forth. So it's, the big picture says this is the right thing to do.
Okay.
I got one comment.
Oh, wow.
I don't think we're trying to end this at one time in a bylaw of some sort. This whole process being evolving at a state level and national level, and a lot of changes are coming in that we have to be adaptable for. So this is going to be a continuous program, and we have to continually look at it and continue to raise the issue and work with the changes that are coming, because there'll be some very significant changes coming. A lot of research going on, a lot of things going on to address the climate change and other issues, and we just have to be flexible.
Well, The Globe did an article about the T, and it looks like they're gonna replace the train cars with gondolas at some point. With tunnels flooding in the future.
It's not so funny for the Bostonians.
I love the gondolas. I haven't brought it up here because I thought you guys think I've got enough issues already, but I'd love to talk about gondolas at some point in the future.
Is there, any member of the public would like to comment on the mixed-use?
Mike?
Yes, Mike?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Michael Glass, FAMHEDIC, affordable housing developer, and just have a few comments. Some is a little bit of review from the last time, but mostly new comments. So from an EDI standpoint, I'm disappointed that Woods Hole, which is probably has the highest employment density in our town, will not be eligible for this program. I'm not quite sure why you decided to eliminate Woods Hole, but that's where most of our people work. A good portion of our people work in Woods Hole, and they desperately need housing down there. So I hope you reconsider and include at least a portion of Woods Hole. If you have a problem, you know, with an individual parcel because of its current plans or something, I hope you consider setting aside some spots.
Is there any chance we could bring up, this is important.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to have this argument on town meeting floor. We'd like, I'd like to deal with this. I think we should look at what is B1 and B2 and see what Michael's talking about and what's really there. And I think what you'll see, that all those areas that you're referring to are two, three, four feet into the floodplain, some in velocity zone, and all historic buildings. And we chose not to go down that road because we didn't want to fight with them.
Oh, you served.
Because we thought the end result would not be good enough. And that's why we did it. But that's really a big deal. We gotta get, this is a big point. We should go right at it. Because most of it's public use, and it's not, it's already excluded. It's just, if you look at it right now.
Yeah.
See the B1? It's just that one little piece. Everything else is public use. And all that area, if you would, every one of those parcels is in the velocity zone, and they're also historic buildings. So do we really want to fight Woods Hole to accomplish that? It's the Steamship Authority and other areas that are 10, eight feet under the floodplain in the velocity zone. It's just, that's why we decided it was not a fight worth having. And I understand your point, but that's our point. Throw the velocity zone map if you don't mind. Can you do that, Tom? Just switch.
Before you do, though, I mean, when you look at some of these areas, I understand what you're saying about the flood zone, but you know, that's a parking lot. That's a great place to build some housing.
It's also the Steamship Authority, I mean.
No, that's not Steamship.
Yeah, it is. That's the Steamship Authority. That's what we're talking about.
This parcel right here, 33, that's a, that's a.
No, I'm talking about this parcel. Behind the Liam Paul.
Well, that's Marine Biological Laboratory.
Maybe housing.
But, believe me, they don't want any zoning changes. They hire big lawyers. They hire really big lawyers and come after us and don't want us to touch that. And that's a practice.
MBL needs to redevelop the parcel, but they do have their housing on.
Pat? Okay, I've got something that I think is absolutely critical, and Paul would agree with me. Why in the world would we ever build housing in an area that we know is going to be flooded?
Right.
Velocity zone.
Yeah. Why would we do that?
Why are we still doing it?
Right. I've got that same question, Mike.
But there are ways to build to, you know, allow that, allow for that to, as we see that's being done not very well, but there is ways to do it.
But keep in mind, our answer is, velocity district and historic district is why we're not doing it. We chose not to fight that issue.
People who work down Woods Hole, they'd love to live down there, but there isn't any housing for them. So if there's a way to help accommodate that, that was my point. I still believe that using FAR would be better than using DUA, dwelling units. And I haven't heard a reason besides people can't understand FAR. It's very simple. We've educated them a lot about affordable housing, but it will result in more housing if we used an FAR instead of dwelling units per acre. For instance, a 20,000-square-foot parcel that could be redeveloped in this area, you know, you're only gonna get maybe eight units out of that. So by using an FAR, you might be able to get double that number of units and let the developer figure out where he's gonna get the parking. Also, I want to emphasize the lease limits, not to have those on the market rate units so that we can tell our seasonal workers that there'll be some reductions in parking. That's the biggest thing that could really help this project.
Let's be clear on that. You're saying that you want summer rentals.
We need housing for seasonal employees.
Okay, I understand what you said, but you don't like the fact that we restrict summer rentals and you want us to have a ability to do summer rentals.
I don't like the fact that you're only, you're restricting that you have to have a one-year lease. That restricts housing for seasonal employees.
So you would like, how long a lease?
Well, most of them are here for three, five, four months.
Well, not necessarily. The employer could lease it.
And I think that's a, you know, an enforcement issue. And I understand what you're saying, you don't want people to turn them into, you know, Airbnb units or just have them for a week rental. I think there's ways that we can manage that. I don't have all the answers, but I'm mostly concerned about housing our seasonal workers, many who live now, seven or eight to a motel room and T-ticket. That's not appropriate. They need some affordable housing. They need housing that they can afford during the time they're here to service. We need those people.
Well, Mike, I agree with you. We need to do something about that. Isn't it true that an employer who wants to house his workers could get a year's lease?
Well, yes, but then what's he do during the summer when his number of employees goes up from 10 to 20? He's gotta find 10 more places for them to live. Yeah, I mean, it's an issue. And honestly, we can resolve it here tonight, but I just want you to think about how we can get away from restricting it so some of these units could be used for seasonal workers. Reducing the parking is a big issue, I think, and it really would allow us to get more housing and less cars parking. And coming up with alternatives to having everyone have a single car per unit, such as shared cars.
I believe we have reduced the parking in this.
To one.
I believe that's exactly what we're doing.
I think you should give the ability to eliminate it if someone comes up with a way to be able to buy other than single-car ownership.
So.
Shared cars, shared electric cars.
You would like us to go further in the reduction that we've made. You're saying it's not enough.
Yes.
Because you were saying like we're not doing it, but we've made a substantial change in the parking requirements.
I think you can go another step.
You're just saying you need to go further. It just seems like you're, now I understand what you're saying, but I thought we made a really.
If they provide an alternative, I'm not just saying just give it away and stuff and let someone not have any parking. If they provide an alternative, such as a shared electric car that their tenants can use, that's dedicated to their tenants, you know, instead of having a car per unit, you use, that's dedicated to their tenants, you know, instead of having a car per unit, you could have one per four units, you know, depending upon the location. Some flexibility in car parking. We need housing, not surface parking for cars in certain areas. And I know you eliminated the parcel on 151, but just so you know, there is public transportation on 151. It's the born run of the Cape Transit Authority. It runs from Sagamore, the parking lot in Sagamore that we sometimes park to go to Boston, and it runs down 28A. It goes by McGanser Crossing, down 151, all the way to Mashpee Commons. So, there is public transportation there. I still believe that this needs some financial incentives. Doesn't mean you have to give them financial incentives, but to make it available to them with some sort of priority. You know, reducing the building permit fees, the processing fees, the other alternative I gave, which was reducing property taxes for the first five years, I think there needs to be some additional financial incentives.
Yeah.
It's disappointing to hear you talk about, you know, not, even though all the comments you got, about not including, and I heard Tom's comments, too, the need for these buildings, these new buildings to be net zero. I mean, we live in a scientific community. We should be setting the example. And I understand the argument about cost. As an affordable housing developer, we're always concerned about cost, but there are so many programs now available to help us achieve that, and there's going to be more. And I think if you listen to the governor when he was here last Wednesday, you know, he's got a lot of money for this type of product, and we should do the best and get the best out of it, and that means make them a requirement that they're energy efficient. Also, too, prioritize the processing of these projects. Nothing kills projects more than time. Jim knows that. John, we all know that. So, a way to do that is so that if we have a project that comes before you and there are some changes that need to be made, hopefully you can find a spot on the next agenda, not one, two, or three months down the road, which often happens. You know, the EDIC is here to help you, too. You know, I was here previously to talk a little bit about how we'd like to partner with you. Some of the things that we can do is we have funding available. We have funding to acquire properties. We have funding to help in doing some of the planning. We have funding to help plan and pay for maybe a design guideline book that you'd like to have. We funded many studies, as you know. We've funded the study for broadband internet in town. So, please, come to us and use us as a resource. I'm here to let you know about that and let you know that we're available. And we're much quicker in getting money out the door than having to go to town meeting or even asking, you know, the front office and stuff. So, please use us as a resource, and I again applaud you for what you're doing and for the effort that's going into this. And I hope my remarks, the remarks that Ed gave you and the other people from the affordable housing, will get incorporated in your next draft so that we have something that's really going to produce the housing that we need. So, thank you.
Mike, thank you very much. I particularly appreciate your offer to help pay for the design guideline book.
That's a really good idea. We should move ahead with that right away.
I heard that one right away.
Just make a, send a letter to us, and our next meeting is August, I think, 8th or so.
Great idea.
And let us know what you need, and we'll put it on the agenda, and we'll see if the board approves it. I'm not here to spend their money.
Right.
But I'm here to tell you that we've done that, and we fund things that we believe are important to the community.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
And thank you for all the thought you've put into this.
Can I just say one comment?
Yeah.
I just want to make it perfectly clear to the general public and to anyone in this room. This bylaw is written not to need any public funding. This is, these are standalone developments. We're giving increased density, and that is going to be the town's only subsidy. And we do not, these developers or property owners are not going to need any public funding at all. None. So, CPC money or any other state money is available for nonprofits. They're developing for units at 30%, 60%. This is a standalone bylaw.
Okay.
I just want to make that perfectly clear.
That's always been our intent.
Always been our intent, and we run the numbers, and this will work.
This will work. Any other people would like to comment tonight? Hey, do we want to, I don't think we really want to close the hearing yet. No. No, so we'll, you could have a motion to continue?
Salute.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. We're looking now, thank you, at our agenda. We--
But it is Hargrave's here now.
Did you want to have Peter? I just wanted to say something to Peter. Peter, it says on the agenda that at this time we would have a discussion about the rocks in the roadway, but in fact, we had the discussion, and we feel we disposed of the issue. We know it's a violation. We feel it's an enforcement issue. We're not an enforcement group, and I'm sorry you weren't here to speak at that time, but your thoughts were here because you'd given them to Jim, and your wife was here, and she reminded us. So, rocks in the roadway, no longer there.
You can still comment.
Oh.
He's here.
Do you still wish to comment?
If the board's giving you an opportunity to speak, let them know if you want to speak.
We can take it.
Oh, we were looking at, okay.
Is he allowed to speak with shorts on? Oh, he's behind the podium now.
Kill your suit up. You're all set. Now you're in trouble.
Okay. Peter Hargrave's Precinct 9. The reason that I'm here and my neighbors, a member of the board, Sue Connors, and my wife and Sue's husband, because we all live on South View Way and we're part of the Neighborhood Association, and I get the automatic announcement about different board meetings in town, and I saw this on the agenda. And so, being in touch with Tom, he informed me that he wanted to give the board a heads-up on this issue because I had been inquiring about whether or not it was permissible to restrict the traffic in that area. In particular, we bought our house in 2007, and there were boulders across the road that the developer put there. The road hasn't been turned over to the neighbors, and we have a petition to get in line for the town to take our road with a betterment, and we have various options in that arena. But right now, it's a private way, and Bywater Trust, the Botello's, put boulders in the road to restrict the, it's a nice cut-through from John Parker to Old Meeting House. And so, people who are cutting through tend to be going someplace in a hurry, and with some kids now coming back into the neighborhood and the traffic, we thought it was a matter of safety, and no one objected to the boulders being there. They've been there. The neighborhood was established in 1984. We bought our house in 2007. The rocks have been there ever since, but in the last year and a half, we've been actively pursuing the transfer of the common properties, the pond, beach, and some recreational space that's still in the hands of Bywater Trust, and the roads are still in the hands of Bywater Trust. So, in the process of understanding what it takes to accomplish this, we learned that there's a bylaw in town, and this was brought to our attention by Frank Duffy and Tom Bott, 305-24D, that talks about dead-end roads and the permissible length and other features of dead-end roads that are required for them to be a permissible part of the development. And Tom's thesis is, as I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the neighborhood would not have been allowed to be built as it was developed had the boulder been, had the boulders been part of the plan, and they were not approved.
This is our point. This is zoning enforcement. We agree with you.
Okay.
We are not a zoning enforcement board.
So, I'm not sure why Mr. Bott felt it advisable to bring this to you.
In your absence at the beginning of the meeting, this got moved up to the front so you wouldn't have to wait till now to tell us this because we already agreed, and we didn't understand why it was here, and it's been removed because it's a violation that needs to be fixed. So, I think you would probably be comfortable with what was done, but in fact, it's already been done.
So, okay, well, that's fine. If we had not, if I hadn't been late, I wouldn't have gained the in-depth appreciation for the time and the work that you folks do, and I appreciate what you're doing for the town and for us, trying to organize our growth. So, maybe we can get Tom involved in the discussion because as this was discovered and it came to light through Frank Duffy's consultation that this wasn't a legal line of boulders, we said, "Well, what do we need to get the boulders out of there?" And it's a complaint. I know it's not you guys.
Peter, it isn't us.
You got to go to another meeting. It's not us.
So, I'm, Tom, did you, okay, so Tom, could you please explain why I'm here, then?
So, as I pointed out before, in order for the town to take an enforcement action, someone has to complain, and if it's a zoning issue, then the building department takes care of it right away. But there isn't a clear mechanism for how does someone address a violation of the subdivision regulation. So, that was the discussion that Frank Duffy and Julian Susso and the DPW director and the police and the fire chief had as to who initiates a complaint in the event that the issue isn't resolved. And that body is likely the planning board, but as I said, I've been here for 23 years in Massachusetts, so I never come across something like this. So, at some point, it may be necessary for this to become an official request for enforcement action where there could be, you know, there's some lever for the town to act on that. So, tonight, we're just introducing the concept of, and I think every member of the planning board has said, "This is clearly a violation of the subdivision regulations. It wouldn't have been permitted otherwise," and it may be resolved before it ever has to come back to any other board or committee. But the initial suggestion from town council and the town manager is that who initiates a complaint? Who says this is not what it's supposed to be? And that's why it's here tonight, to see from the board that the board concurred that, yeah, this is not germane for the subdivision regulations.
My apologies to the board. I need to excuse myself.
I see this, it's a private way, correct?
That's right.
And you have an association?
That's right.
And lawyers?
I think this should be an association issue with the trust, the Bywater Trust, to have them, to have them take care of this, and if it's a matter of traffic calming, put in a speed bumper to that effect. But this is a matter for the trust and the association, as far as I can see.
I understand what you're saying. We have tried that avenue, and I appreciate your, the time that you've given me and Tom's help in trying to provide direction and an outlet for us to resolve this. So, let me ask your indulgence for one more question. I don't know who Eladio Gore reports to. Does he report to you, Tom?
As a retirement board.
No, he's back, believe it or not. He's back!
As of Tuesday, he's now our--
Surprise, surprise, surprise.
So, would you say, is he the one that needs to make the judgment if the letter from our board constitutes a sufficient complaint that can be acted on? Or is he the one that needs to provide us direction on how we can get this resolved? Because I think it's a legal matter, not something for Bywater Trust.
In the opinion of town council, we're, he's sorting that out. Like I said, I think that the issue is, and I've said it before, it's not strictly a zoning violation. In order for the town to take some enforceable action, there has to be a, someone withstanding to make that complaint, and that standing may be the planning board. But that's why we're here tonight, just to introduce what's going on.
What's going on? Okay, Tom.
Didn't I read a letter in the packet that the developer said he's going to remove the rocks?
Yes, you started to, and that group of people who signed that is our board of the Neighborhood Association.
I thought there was a response from the developer saying he is going to remove the rocks.
Well, the issue is they've been pushed to the side of the road but not removed from the road, and the fire department and other emergency vehicles might have a hard time getting through.
But currently, there's access. Is that correct?
Right, that's right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, can we expect, then, that Frank is coming back to you, or should I contact Frank? I really would like to know where to go next.
So, the question is, the developer removes the rocks for how long?
I'd want to say something. This is not our job, and if we open this up, that every, we have Seaco Shores, hundreds of private roads with rocks in the road, and we start having hearings on it, we're going to have a whole new business of clearing streets. It's not what we do. We have zoning enforcement, and it's not us. We don't do this, and if you want to take us down that road, I think we're going to hold, you should understand how many, look at Seaco Shores and how many roads, private roads, are done with rocks, and we're going to have this conversation, and that's what we're going to do, have rock hearings? Come on.
So, Mr. Fox, in the same tone that you're giving me, let me say, I understand this is not the place to resolve it. Are you telling me you won't tell me how to resolve it, or you don't know how to resolve?
The zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector is the chief zoning enforcement officer for the town. That is his job and everything to do with zoning. It's not ours. And now, I don't want it to make it ours. I think it creates a whole new level. I know you're reaching out for help, but every time--
I just need direction.
Okay, and I don't think you really meant to be yelling at Mr. Hargrave.
I'm sorry, but I think I'm more upset that Tom's trying to include a whole new scope of work into our board.
I am bringing to the board what town council and the town manager asked me to do, so.
Okay, and have we dealt with it?
Thank you, Tom, for your help.
I think we have.
I'm not feeling the love here, though.
I've done what I was asked to do.
Good, I'm glad.
So, okay, let me release you from this.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wish we could help you, but we can't.
Peter. Where's the love? Peter.
Committee reports.
None at this time.
None at this time? Anybody with a committee report?
No.
No. Okay. Any announcements? Any what? Announcements.
Well, we have a letter here.
We do. We haven't gotten to general correspondence. That's coming right up. General correspondence. We have a letter. You've all had a chance to read it. It's from Laura Moynihan, believing that we should have notified her that at our July 13th meeting, we were going to discuss, have as a discussion item, something about Lewis Next Road.
Found with Housing Trust. Found with Housing Trust.
Not her, but the Housing Trust. I had already answered this because she emailed this to me to say, "We do not send notifications for discussion items." She responded that it wasn't a discussion item because a motion was made. That motion was made in error. The error was pointed out by Bob Amen. The motion was withdrawn. It was a discussion item, and we do not send notices for discussion items. Is there anything else we could reply to, Mrs. Moynihan? Miss or Mrs.? No, I think that's-- Okay. Any other general correspondence? For some reason, these signature things came back.
It probably didn't come out of the folder from the last meeting.
Oh, okay. I'm going to give them back to you.
All right.
You can have your letter back, too.
Well, actually, let me take a look at those. There may have been a second section. You were supposed to sign those.
Oh, it looks like we signed everything with a slot.
If I may.
Yep.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Um, wait, future agenda items. I have something I want to say on that. I've been waiting to get to that one. All right, on future agenda items, the thing I wanted to say, and this will be about as welcome as rocks in the road, is we've had some questions about signs. Who administers signs? If we are the site plan review and the design review group in town, with that goes signs, potentially. So, I would like to put that on as a future agenda discussion item.
Is it now the building department that does signs?
That might have changed the situation, but let's just add it.
Do we still have a sign review committee, standing committee?
No.
The town selectmen, have they not reappointed people? I didn't know they canceled it. My understanding was that there is a sign review committee, and if they're not being reappointed, isn't that the selectmen's job?
Well, my understanding is it's a future agenda item.
Yes. Okay. I understand what we're doing.
I, you know, I'm not prepared to discuss this, and I've had discussions with a few folks about it, but it's not--
I was here when we got, when we changed what used to be the design review committee, and what we found out that--
Discussing it now.
Well, no, I'm just telling you in the past, this is what happened in the past. This is why, I didn't know they went away, and have they gone away?
That's a trend.
Is there no sign review committee?
I don't know. Future, future agenda.
Okay. Let's not discuss it, then. I'm sorry. I thought--
People think it's gone. It might not be gone, but it may be gone.
Well, Pat was here. Pat and I and Bob, remember where this--
So, it's a future agenda item?
Yes.
You're, you know, you're, you got to stick to the script. You were going to talk about things that we're not going to talk about.
It's an attempt to do something that I guess the rest of you aren't aware of, but we'll let it go.
Yep, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Okay, now, Paul, what'd you want to do?
I already made a motion.
Okay, second?
Has a second.
On favor?
Aye.
That's it.